For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to public comments. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have five public speakers this evening. How much time can we allot?
Just four minutes apiece.
Very well. Our first speaker is Natalie Rutledge, who will discuss CIS report card, and she'll be followed by Connie Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Chastain, Vice Chairman Wheeler, members of the school board, and Superintendent Ragsdale. I am, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity, for your support and partnership for our students this past year. The mission of communities and schools is to surround students with a community of support, empower them to stay in school and achieve in life. CIS site coordinators help struggling students with the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and coursework, and helping remove the barriers that prevent them from staying in school. The 2018-19 school year has had many successes. Ninety-eight percent of our case-managed students graduated from Cobb County School District High School or were promoted to the next grade. And we celebrated along with you in December at the first graduation class at Cobb Horizons High School. Over 140 students were taken on college tours who had never been to a college campus, expanding their opportunities and realizing a viable path to a post-secondary education. In partnership with Mus Ministries, we managed food pantries at Osborne, Pebblebrook, and South Cobb, with over 100 families receiving groceries each month. And over 8,000 books were distributed to the students in Cobb County School District, helping build home libraries, increase fluency, and create a love of reading. As a benefiting organization of Cobb Children's Fund, Cobb Diaper Day and Operation Warrant allowed us to provide diapers and jackets to students and families in need. Over 1,400 students participated in our financial literacy program, Reality U. Meeting National Financial Literacy Standards, Reality U challenges middle school and high school students to navigate their 26-year-old life with career options and earning potential based upon their current GPA. This in-school field trip provides them with the realization that academic achievement supports fiscal health and wealth. And the 1920 school year promises to be just as incredible with opportunities for more partnership and growth. This past winter, we were awarded a CIS national grant called for the Challenge Grant School for Garrett Middle School. In partnership with CIS Georgia, Georgia Department of Education and Cobb County School District, I am thrilled to share that we have placed a new site coordinator at Garrett Middle School to provide resources, services, and programming to help struggling students. We are opening a school resource center at Cobb Horizons School to support basic needs, food pantry, and clothing closet to their school community. We were recently awarded Phase III emergency food shelter funding to provide rent, utility, and mortgage assistance to families in need and our school communities to help prevent homelessness. We are honored to be formally designated as a state of hope site for the Georgia Department of Family and Children's Services. We know that it takes a holistic approach to help our students thrive in school, excel academically, and graduate career or college-ready. We look forward to strengthening our partnership with Cobb County School District to meet the needs of our most vulnerable families and children. The 1920 school year will be great. And on behalf of the CIS Marietta Advisory Council, Site Coordinator staff, and myself, thank you for allowing communities and schools to be part of student success.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Connie Jackson, who will say thank you, and she'll be followed by Renee Dodd.
Hi. Good evening. I just wanted to thank all of you and everyone who supported me this June and July during the fight of my life, for my life, and all of the support I received. I received so many emails and calls, cards, and flowers. And I really wanted to thank everyone publicly because I had no idea how much support and love I would receive. And it meant the world to me, and I really appreciated it. And I will live up to your support. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Dodd, who will discuss student safety, and she'll be followed by Kalanet Amir.
I had two handouts that I submitted. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. The school district in Cobb County feel is taking a reactive approach to student safety and support, and that there are several ticking bomb-type situations that could result in someone getting hurt, hurting others, or another tragic situation. Whereas neighboring Cherokee County and other counties' school districts are taking a more proactive approach. So, I feel like this could be done in Cobb County as well. A year ago, myself and some other parents started the Cobb County Schools Safety Coalition. And the easiest way to find us is on Facebook. And some of the concerns that have been brought to us over the past year, one is a reputable wrestling coach that found out that one of his volunteer coaches was a pedophile, and yet he did nothing to help protect the kids. In fact, he helped him continue working with those kids. We had a Teacher of the Year that started a fake after-school club to manipulate and eventually sexually assault a female student, and now there's a lawsuit recently filed by that student. We had a male student at another school that sexually assaulted a female student, and the school did nothing to notify the parents and didn't do anything to find out if there were even other victims. At another school, a female student was sexually assaulted by her male classmate. The school was notified, and he was suspended for three days. But then he continued to go to the same class as his victim for the rest of the school year despite the victim's emotional distress about this situation. Other concerns that have been brought to our coalition the last year, we've had a student who threatened to put bombs in a middle school. And when concerned, parents notified the school. The school did not communicate back with the parents, and that student continued to stay at that school and continue with those threats. Several schools have mold, rodent, and bug problems that are causing health issues for the staff and students. Several parents have reported incidents of bullying at Cobb schools and the lack of help from the school and the district. Yet Cobb is showing abnormally low bullying incidents, even at zero for some schools, which to me would be statistically impossible. Lawsuits are filed and pending from parents on those. 911 protocols were being ignored by a principal when requested by the school nurse to call 911 for a student. One parent even had to pull their student from their school just for that student's safety. Students with learning differences have to wait months and sometimes an entire school year to get help that they need to receive that they have a right to via rights law. Most don't get help until they're failing and have developed anxiety, depression, or other behavioral issues. One parent recently filed a lawsuit, and there's a possible class action lawsuit coming. According to the 2018 Student Survey, over 2,200 Cobb students attempted suicide. I don't know what the number might be of the ones that were successful. We have a lack of mental health counselors in the schools. What we know is counselors in the schools are mostly for academic, and those that do provide some mental health are spread so thin that they can only be reactive and not proactive in supporting students. Some solutions are, and the additional handout that I gave is that Cobb County Schools have created an ad hoc committee for the social-emotional learning of their student body. These concerns might be considered normal school issues for some people, but for the parents and citizens of Cobb County, we're not willing to settle for normal. We need change for the better for every student, not just the ones who are going to give the district those high test scores and ratings. We hope the school district joins the mission of our School Safety Coalition in reaching out to help support and keep our students safe. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kalanet Amir, who will be followed by Monica Delancy.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. I'm here also on behalf of the Cobb County Safety Coalition, just like Renee. As Renee said, we started as three moms concerned about the safety of our children in Cobb schools. We created a platform where other parents could voice their concerns as well, and where we could openly discuss safety, security, health, and other school issues affecting our children. In just one year since we started, we have learned of reported student safety concerns and violations, sexual assault and harassment, ineffective or lack of counseling assistance, lack of mandated reporting, ignoring of sexual assault allegations, lack of communication from the school and district with the parents and community, and other various concerns. So far, we have learned of such issues at Pope, Wheeler, Kel, Dodgen, Mountain View, McKeachern, Alatuna, Harrison, and Trit. And these are just the schools we, our little coalition, has heard about. How many more are there? How many more students are suffering? Why is Cobb not following the path of Cherokee and other counties that are taking proactive stances to protect their students rather than reactive ones, covered up in silencing the victims and encouraging predators and instigators? Georgia is known to be a predator-friendly state. The laws in Georgia are much less strict than in neighboring states where the punishments are much more severe, and therefore predators from their states come to Georgia. Predators in our schools and communities are only going to get worse. In addition to predators, we are seeing more and more violent acts in schools, and little to no communication from the county and administrators about protecting the victims instead of protecting the privacy of the perpetrators. As stated in a Cobb article link, somebody is either going to commit suicide, somebody's going to shoot up a school, or somebody's going to fight back. There needs to be a county and parent coalition that meets regularly to implement change and assess the ongoing and growing needs of our students. We encourage you, and we have already several times, to join our Safety Coalition, to really listen to the parent concerns and help take some action, to see what avenues other counties are taking, which are working and have proven results. We are asking for action, not evasiveness and reaction. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker, Mr. Chair, is Monica Delancy, who will discuss Riverside Austell Community.
Good evening. Monica Delancy resides in Riverside Austell Community. I apologize for my voice, but I've been coaching our little kids. We're getting ready for National Night Out Against Crime Event, where we'll be doing a kickball tournament, and I'm the coach. So, that's why my voice is hoarse, but let me tell you, they're going to be really good. And so, some things we've been doing in Riverside Community, we've been hosting a mini-activity camp, and one of our apartment complexes at Kingsley Village. And at the camp, instead of the kids just coming to get their lunches that Mus Ministries provide to the area, they come and take part in arts and crafts and leadership opportunities. And last week, Mr. David Morgan was able to come out and speak to our students. I want to thank you for doing that. And they was able to ask some questions, not only about what you do, but about being a teacher. And so, hopefully, we're going to be raising some teachers in the future, right? So, thank you again, Mr. Morgan, for coming out, sharing your time, spending time with us. In addition, Mus Ministries provide lunches to, I believe, about 17 apartment communities in the Riverside area. And also, they partner with Impact Church to distribute lunches. And let me tell you something, having Mus Ministries to fill in that gap during the summertime is extremely helpful to our families. I know that at Kingsley Village, we serve three apartment complexes. It's 100 lunches daily. And Mr. Morgan can tell you, they were lined up. They were lined up, okay? And we're there as volunteers because the managers are too busy. They can't really, you know, pass them out. So, if we wasn't there giving out the lunches, those students would miss out, right? And a couple apartment complexes reached out to me and asked me to get settled for their apartment complex. So, there's another organization loving hands that distribute lunches to the other apartment complexes because Mus Ministries is too full. So, I'm just glad the opportunity is provided, not only to that community, but countywide. So, in addition to Mus Ministries and Impact Church, Shaw Church helps out distributing lunches as well. And I just also want to talk about National Night Out Against Crime Event. Again, the Riverside Austell Community will be hosting there August the 4th with the kickball tournament, and Cobb County Hall will be hosting National Night Out Against Crime Event on August the 6th at Gem Miller Park. And thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Now, next, we have items requiring action following Executive Session. Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to bring all those items, and remember, there'll be two separate motions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm pleased to first bring you the Human Resources Personnel Report for today, July 18th. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the Personnel Action Report as discussed in Executive Session. We have one principal level or higher position recommendation. Recommend the appointment of Tommy J. Perry to Principal, South Cobb High School, effective July 19, 2019. And this concludes the Personnel Report, our first item.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do I have a motion? Mr. Morgan, Mr. Scamahorn, seconds. Any discussion, comments? All right, seeing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor, accept the report. All right, any opposed? All right, that's 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the second item, we have a Personnel Hearing Motion Recommendation. This is a motion that the Board accept the recommendation of the tribunal to terminate the teaching contract of Teshua Tamile Baker for the 2019-20 school year for incompetency, insubordination, willful neglect of duties, and any other good insufficient cause.
Mr. Adams, do I have a motion? Mr. Scamahorn, do I have a second? Ms. Davis, do I need any discussion? Okay, none of discussion. All right, all those in favor, voting, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? And we have two abstentions. All right. Okay, next is the Action Agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, consent. Here we go. We had one item from this afternoon. Yeah, one and two. The Authorization of School Property Disposal and the Easement for Clay Harmony Leland, those were approved. So, we don't have to vote on that without objection. There we go. All right. Now, next item, discussion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to bring Agenda Item Number Three as listed on the Action Agenda.
Thank you, sir. As discussed in detail during the work session, Agenda Item Number Three is a recommendation for approval toward a contract for the secondary data center. Again, in accordance with SPOS 5, and as referred to in the SPOS Notebook, we are scheduled to receive a secondary data center, as highlighted in the attached facility summary. Award of the contract at this time will allow the project to remain on schedule. Substantial completion date of March 5, 2020, recommending that the award and the amount you see listed there, $4.505 million, be awarded to Cooper and Company General Contractors as budgeted in SPOS 5, and this will allow us to execute the contract and begin work.
Do I have a motion? Do we accept Mr. Adams' superintendent's recommendation as stated? Dr. Howard, you're making a motion. All right. I want to get the motion second and then the discussion. All right. So, are you making a motion? Mr. Scamahorn will make a motion. Mr. Banks, seconds. Okay, now discussion. Dr. Howard.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. Just wanted to get your commentary on potential effect of other pressing projects. Down to delay or change of scope, just any additional information that you can give on how this may affect other projects. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Excellent question. Approval of this project will not have any kind of negative or deleterious effect on any other projects. Our SPOS department and our financial services folks have worked diligently together to ensure that everything can be achieved based on what we've laid out thus far. So, the short answer is no, there will not be a negative effect. Anyone else? Mr. Scamahorn?
I'm going to ask the superintendent to stop me if you need to, okay? But I want to emphasize the importance of this data center, to make sure that we stay on top of the emerging technologies and that we are able to safeguard employees and students' records as well as financial records. So, I'm glad it's not going to affect any other projects, but it's very important that this project goes through. Any addenda? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right. We'll have the vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. All right, that's seven. Any opposed? None. All right, 7-0. Passes next.
Yes, sir. Agenda Item Number Four, Recommendation for Approval to Increase the Number of Classrooms Being Constructed at King Springs Elementary School. Again, as discussed in detail during the work session, as we presented in May of 19, the updated enrollment study, we learned that the estimated five-year projection for the population of King Springs was going to be higher than initially thought when we initially designed the school. 159 students, estimated five years out when it peaks than initially thought. So, we are coming back to you and recommending that you approve the construction of eight additional classrooms to accommodate those additional projected students, and recommend that you award this additional construction in the amount you see there, $2.108 million and some change, as budgeted in SPOS 5, to increase the number of IUs at King Springs from 67 to 75 to accommodate what we now believe to be the increased capacity.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation? Dr. Howard moves. Any seconds? Ms. Davis seconds. Any further discussion or comments? Any questions? I see none. All those in favor of the motion as stated. That's seven. Any opposed? Well, I saw the hand going up. I was looking at you. All right, 7-0. Did I ask for objections? We didn't have any objections, right. 7-0, passes. Okay, next.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Brad Johnson to come forward and bring Agenda Item Number Five, the Adoption of the Millage Rate.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, Agenda Item Number Five is to adopt a resolution establishing the millage rate. The FY 2020 General Fund Millage was approved by the Cobb County School Board, or the General Fund Budget was approved by the Cobb County School Board in May 2019. In this budget was a continuation of the same general fund millage rate as the year that we were in previously of 18.9 mills. This means from a millage rate tax perspective, the school board did not raise the millage tax rate. The Cobb County School District has a long history of keeping property taxes low. Several statistics. Number one, the Cobb County Board of Education has kept the general fund millage rate the same at 18.9 mills since 2007. Number two, the last change in the general fund millage rate was a millage decrease in 2007 from 19 mills to 18.9 mills. And number three, the Cobb County Board of Education completely eliminated the debt service millage in 2007 from .9 mills to zero mills, with this decision resulting in the district being completely free of long-term debt. Included in the FY 2020 budget approved was a 5.5% estimate of net property value digest growth in Cobb County. I'm pleased to present to the board today that the actual property digest growth from the Cobb County Tax Assessor was 5.44%. So, our estimate was extremely close, within a fraction of a percent. It's important to note that a completely separate entity, the Cobb County Tax Assessor, assesses property values annually in Cobb County. If the tax assessor lowers the value of a Cobb citizen's home, the district's millage rate will be applied to a lower value, and that property owner will pay less property tax. If the tax assessor increases the value of a Cobb citizen's home, the district's millage rate will be applied to a higher property value, and that property owner will pay more in property tax. In either case, though, the school district millage rate is still 18.9 mills, and our general fund millage tax rate has not increased. Georgia Law Code 48-5-32 contains a provision where the district is required to conduct three public hearings prior to the final millage rate vote. All three public hearings have been completed. The district is scheduled to establish the general fund millage rate tonight, as presented by the Board Agenda Item. Mr. Chair, that's my presentation for this meeting, and we're available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Let's see. Do I have a motion that we accept the report? Dr. Howard, second. Mr. Scamahorn, with the motion, second. Any discussion, comments, or questions? All right, Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, are we still rebuilding our fund balance?
Per board policy, the board strives to maintain at least a one-month reserve on fund balance. Our auditors would suggest that we really need to have two months of fund balance.
That's where I thought, but we're not at two months yet, are we?
We are not.
Okay. So, I was just going to drive home the point that for many years, we were basically living paycheck to paycheck and making men's meat and keeping us out of debt. And part of that was to spend down, some people might call our fund balance a rainy day account, if you will. I don't particularly subscribe to that description because we use it when we have to. It's not really a rainy day thing. There's a lot of times where we have to dip into that. So, are we at one month now? Or are we above one month?
We are above one month. I will say this in your comments, using fund balance is one-time money, and we have recurring expenses. So, that's a difficult subject when we discuss the budget. So, it's very important, though, that we have a contingency reserve.
Yeah. And though this is not a budget session, per se, I just wanted to drive home, if I could, to whoever may be watching, that we're still have remnants of climbing out of the 10-year recession.
We do have remnants of climbing out. And again, our auditors would like us to see more fund reserve. Of course, they're accountants, and they're very conservative. But we've had, we've been through the rough times, and we understand the importance of it.
Okay. And we're still being very prudent with our money, very conservative with it, correct?
We track money every month. We track every expenditure. The system won't let an expenditure go through if it's over budget. So, we're on it, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me jump in here, too. We had an earlier conversation, too, today about the rate, but I'm glad you brought those points up because it reminded me of something. There are a lot of districts that have a majority of their SPOS revenue dedicated to retiring debt. So, not only are the taxpayers voting themselves a 1% tax to help education, but the majority of it is going to retire debt. So, that being said, I just want to remind all of our citizens in Cobb, the taxpayers, that it is a tremendous advantage for this county to be, for this school district to be debt-free because you see all of the projects that we continually bring. We're able to add on an extension at King Springs, do what we need to to protect our data, and have the other construction projects that are ongoing at Campbell High School, at Pebblebrook High School. To be able to do those and not even have to worry about, okay, how much SPOS money are we going to have to dedicate to retiring debt? That is just a tremendous benefit for this district. But most importantly, it's a tremendous benefit for our taxpayers in Cobb County because we are being tremendous positive and good stewards of their taxpayer dollars, as it was mentioned earlier about we have over $2 billion worth of identified needs. It obviously, less than $1 billion of SPOS money cannot cover those. So, being able to not have to continually worry about an additional expenditure of SPOS being taken to retire debt is just a tremendous benefit and accolades, again, to our CFO, Brad Johnson, and his financial services team because it's through tremendous forecasting and planning that we're able to do everything we're able to do with the budget, provide our employees with the biggest pay raise ever in the history of the school district, and yet maintain an 18.9 millage rate. And, you know, a lot of people will be like, well, you know, what's 1.1 mills? Well, it's an increase, is what it is. So, and then there would be no buffer should we encounter a dire straits situation of an economic downturn and those kind of things. So, I just want to applaud the board, number one, because, again, when we hit in '08, the economic downturn, not increase the economic downturn, not increasing the millage rate, when it would have been a tremendously easy thing to do, is a tremendous accolade for this board. And to maintain that now and moving forward is just a, I truly appreciate being a resident of Cobb County now. So, you know, it is something that needs to be said, and unfortunately, we don't say it enough, I think. So I wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone here and that's watching that that's a tremendous benefit to be a citizen of Cobb County and have the great school district that we have.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else comment? Okay. Dr. Howard.
I guess I'll pile on the appreciation here. I think it's a good time to do it. But I over, I heard, again, that we have no long-term debt. That's correct?
That is correct.
That's, that we are, we have adequate reserves, but we are on pace to kind of be in that ideal. Is that correct?
We're above one-month reserve. The ideal would be two months.
Okay. We've kind of resisted any temptation to raise the millage rate since 2007. Did I hear that correctly?
And that's twelve years in running.
That's fantastic. Like the superintendent said, I mean, we, you can't really argue about being a good steward. I mean, we've been a good steward of taxpayer money, and we have to continue to trumpet that information. It's easy to kind of talk about the challenges, but we have to be able to celebrate the things that we're doing extremely well. It also builds trust. I know as a board, it builds trust among us that we don't have a quick, you know, trigger on these major financial decisions. It builds trust with communities. It builds trust with all of our employees and our team that we'll be fiscally responsible, especially with this year being, I guess, a different dynamic on the board. You know, sometimes there's anxiety about political dynamics. So it's nice to know that we on the same page to make sure we're all going to be good stewards of taxpayer money. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank the board, thank the superintendent, and appreciate you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Dr. Howard. Anyone else? Okay. Let's vote. All those in favor of the recommendation is stated? Oh, excuse me. Did I get, yeah, I got a motion. I got a second. Now, yeah, we're going to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's been a long day. Okay. That's seven. Any opposed? None. Seven oh. So that passes. So this brings us to board member and superintendent comments. We will start with Ms. Davis.
It was really great to hear from our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Veder, yesterday at the New Teacher Academy. He emphasized the importance of teachers having high expectations for all of their students and having the kind of classroom where students know that you care about them and their success. And so that gets at the culturally responsive teaching that Dr. Elgar was speaking about earlier today in our meeting. And it's a very student-centered approach, and approach, and it's very important, vital, especially in an increasingly diverse school district like Cobb County. And, oh, and I was very encouraged to know that we actually included inclusive teaching in our training for new teachers. So we are, we are making things happen, and I'm very excited about that. And I'm just looking forward to a great school year and wishing our staff and students an excellent first day. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So fifty years ago this week, the United States did something pretty remarkable for the documentary Geeks Like Me. You may have saw the PBS American Experience three-part series about America going, doing with the space travel and going to the moon and our space race with the Russians. And so I'm just really excited that fifty years ago, we can really celebrate that as Americans. I think it's also interesting to realize that during that time, the Vietnam War was kind of in full swing. Some major civil rights upheaval was going on in the country. It was a pretty tumultuous decade. And the fact that we had leadership that was kind of, it wasn't easy, but still having vision to be bold and to look toward the future and to do something daring while trying to manage all the mess and the upheaval that was going on in the current, it's something to look back on and to know what's possible. So at this point, I can be inspired by Buzz Aldrin Jr. and Neil Armstrong and realize that there are some big dreams that we can be dreaming up right now for fifty years from now. And I believe that can come out of Cobb County schools while we manage all the trouble and all the hardships and the good and the bad that comes with what's going on, we're trying to educate our children the best way we can. Also want to give a shout out to Russell Elementary, which successfully launched their twenty-first space launch a couple of months ago. So they will be featured on an Eleven Alive News segment in appreciation for the fifty year anniversary. So look out for one of our best Cobb County elementary schools being celebrated with their twenty-seven-hour simulation, space simulation. I'll leave it at that. Schools getting started. We have two out of my three kids will be in school at Nickajack Elementary School. And for all the parents out there, I know we're sad that the summer is coming to an end, but we're excited that they'll be in good hands at Cobb County Schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say congratulations to those who put on the kickoff for the start of the new school last week. It was a well-attended event and very enlightening and at a fun time. I also want to say congratulations to the new teachers. I got to talk to a lot of them, but the one question that was asked, how many of them are starting a second career? They've already finished the one career, retired, or decided to leave what they've been doing for years and decide to be teachers? It was a pretty large number, very impressive. Also was impressive in some of the new teachers I talked to is how many actually came out of Cobb County Schools. We are creating, are developing a lot of teachers within our county who want to come back and teach in our schools. In fact, last year, I was talking to one elementary new teacher, and she is teaching in the school that she graduated, and she's teaching alongside some of the teachers that taught her. So you never know. Also, I want to say, this month, we celebrated a very important date, July the fourth. And let me take a minute to read part of the Declaration of Independence. "In Congress, July the fourth, seventeen seventy-six, the unanimous declaration of the thirteen United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unadulterable rights, that among those these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start, unfortunately, with something very solemn. Since last we met, we've lost nine officers nationwide, nine. We're on par to be losing more. Family men, men of honor, men with courage, and let me back up. I, men and women of honor and courage, because we've lost women officers this year already, too. More importantly, we lost one here at home in Hall County, Deputy Sheriff Nicholas Blaine Dixon. End of watch, Sunday, July the seventh, 2019. He leaves behind two very young children and a widow and a family that's going to miss him for the rest of their lives. Please keep your thoughts and prayers for not only his family, but for all the officers that protect us. Case in point, I feel very comfortable here tonight because we have two officers that are making sure we stay safe. So I want to thank both of you. To other items, I'd like to thank Human Resources. We're ninety, ninety-nine point five percent, or ninety-eight point five?
Ninety-nine point eight.
Ninety-nine point eight. Sounds like a temperature. Outstanding. You worked diligently since probably about January, or you may even start before then to try to plan your work fares and employee fares and to get those things done. So, Mr. Adams, hats off to you and your staff. Curriculum, Ms. Lawson, you're awake, aren't you? Yeah. Okay. I know you have to, you too, change, curriculum changes, curriculum improvements. It's practice before the game starts, a lot of hours put in and get our teachers ready so that we can excel at our graduating and milestone test. And, Ms. Hill, I know you've got a big job getting our principals, our admin folks, and I'm not sure you have a lot on your plate, too. So y'all are unsung heroes for getting us ready for game day. And I don't know what Dr. Daniel does, so, no. Dr. Daniel, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what your boss says you do after the meeting, okay? But, no. Dr. Daniel, I know you have to be superintendent's alter self to go to where he can't be. So you've got a super big job to cover the county and, in fact, other in the metro area because I know he sends you to meetings he doesn't want to go to downtown Atlanta. So outstanding job. I'm sure, and none of us are going to be here without Mr. Johnson and his counting the pennies. We have an upcoming Communications Department that's on its toes now, and I've waited a lot of years to see what's evolving there. So I'm sure I'm leaving folks out. There's some other folks in the back there. Technology, Mark, I know you're already asking for new and better things, and they're trying to. So we just have an outstanding staff, and it all points to one man that's doing it and the superintendent's putting together a staff that's just unsurpassed. And I know I sound like I'm over the top, but you can't beat the results that we're getting and that we're going to get better results yet in the years to come. So thank you all. So, and then finally, Dr. Howard, thank you for mentioning Vietnam, but some of us lived through that. And it was a tumultuous sixties, but there was also some great things that happened during the sixties besides the moonshot. So, and one of those things is I got married. So anyway, but we'll talk about that more next month. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. I want to say how excited I am for three school leaders that we have coming into post three. Dana Goules at Pebblebrook High School, T.J. Perry at South Cobb High School, and Kristy Brown at Garrett. I want all three of you to know that I've heard that all three of you walk on water, you're transformational leaders, and that you're going to hit the ground running at your respective schools. And I feel, I feel honored that you will be leading our children and our communities. I'm excited to do whatever I can as a board member to assist you in your efforts. And also, I've been saying this a lot, but one of the things I've learned in this position is anger surpasses accomplishment. When people are angry, when we look at this list, it's normally two or three pages, right? Yet, when we accomplish something, the list seems to be significantly shorter. And I say that to say this. One of the things, justifiably so, has been making sure that we can do all that we could do at Pebblebrook High School when it comes to safety. And I just want to say again, the role, I feel that one of my responsibilities is to help to create a means to an end, that people see that government works. And I think that they brought concerns to us, and they were addressed. And that's how it's supposed to work. Like, that's what, that's how people gain confidence in their respective institutions. And I just, again, want to say, thank you, Mr. Superintendent and staff, for being responsive and receptive. Now, we didn't receive nearly the fanfare for the solutions as we did. Now, some people did, so I don't want to dismiss everyone. But, and I hope the people who were disenchanted, that they also voice support and, and they celebrate us being responsive to something that needs to happen at one of our local schools. So those conclude my comments. Mr. Chair, I yield back.
Okay. Mr. Scamahorn, you've got one more?
Just real quick, I would request that Mr. Ragsdale and/or the staff, that when we give out our accolades and we really want to show our appreciation for those that we may inadvertently overlook, that you'll pass that on to them, to those folks. And even if we don't overlook, you know, like our principals and our admin teams and all that, it's appreciated all the way up and down the line. And in my mind, it's very important that we all get the message that, that we're doing great things and great, great work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, looking forward to a new school year and hope things continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start out, and so Mr. Morgan mentioned three new principals in his post, and I just want to let him know that I have personally warned each of them about their board member. So as we've had Mr. Elgar here talking about, you know, that kind of thing. So, anyway, in all seriousness, though, I'm excited about the new principals that we have, just excited about the level of energy that they're bringing to their schools and just looking forward to the great things that they do. I do want to mention, start off with leadership kickoff. I think we had an awesome day. We are always up for trying new things. And this year, of course, we're attempting, I say we, meaning Sherri Hill is attempting the digital backpack, but great idea. I know that the leaders appreciate being able to not have a sit and get, you know, and be able to come together and get excited about the year starting off. And I do want to give a shout out to our speaker that we had, Tony Engel. He obviously was a title-winning basketball coach, multiple titles, and he was just an awesome speaker, very inspiring. You know, you realize that your bad days are not very bad when you hear his stories. And so I think it was awesome for us to be able to hear, but also awesome for somebody in his position to acknowledge how much of an impact educators have and for nobody to really take that for granted, which is always great to hear. And then we did have a new teacher welcome, over a thousand new teachers. And to Mr. Banks's point, I did ask the question about how many new teachers we had straight out of college, and then how many teachers, new teachers we had that were starting a second career. And just to my eye, it seemed like the second-career new teachers outnumbered the new teachers coming out of college. Now, that's awesome and disturbing at the same time because it's awesome that we have people wanting to start a second career regardless of what level they find themselves at, that maybe they just think they're called to teach and they're starting in that teaching career, or maybe it is a true, I've retired now, want to give back. The disturbance- The disturbing part is, is that those outnumbered new teachers coming out of college, which says that we don't have very many teacher want-to-be's in the college level, and that is tremendously disturbing. So you know, it, it just goes to show though that with us being at 98, 99.8% fully staffed, that people are acknowledging and realizing that Cobb is the best place to teach, lead, and learn. And it's better in Cobb, and that's just the way it is. I won't repeat the other things that I've said about that at various leadership meetings, but leaders can share that if you, if you want. And I want to also just say, I'm looking forward to the district-wide broadcast when I'm, when I'm able to get in front of via technology, our technology that not too many other districts have the benefit of, being able to speak to every single employee at the same time. So that's always a tremendous event and I look forward to that each year. August the 1st, first day of school. Big day. It's August the 1st from now on, until you guys decide you want to change that. So you know, it, it is, it is very encouraging though for parents. I know because I've heard from them about how they can count on knowing what our calendar is. And that's a tremendous benefit for them. And I want to end tonight with a shout out to Max Bacon. You know, he decided to hang it up and not run for reelection. He, you know, I consider him a friend. And it's just been awesome to see what he has been able to do, being in that position for that long and being able to go to his event to where he recognizes the Volunteer of the Year, the Teacher of the Year, and the Employee of the Year at his Smyrna-based schools. And he just does an awesome job. Can't always say that you'll stand behind what he says because you never know what he's going to say. I might resemble that remark. But, but tremendous appreciation for him in that position. He's been a tremendous supporter of the school district as a whole and Cobb County as a whole specifically in Smyrna. So just going to miss him. And obviously, his sister Linda Keeney, which she tried to stay employed with us without letting anybody know that he was her brother. But just a great family and appreciate their friendship. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Banks, did you have something else to say?
I do, and thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Even though he wouldn't say this, our superintendent at the kickoff made a, what I would call a mini state of the education speech. It was well-received. It had a lot of meat in it. I think the people there understood and they probably heard some of it before. But it's a, it's a great accomplishment that our superintendent can get up there and talk for an hour. You would think he doesn't have any notes, but he's got some screens in front of him. The secret is out. Also, I want to say in the new teachers event, Mr. Adams did a lot of explaining what is, I guess you would say, the do's and the don'ts of new teachers. A lot of detail, a lot of things that you can do, but there's some things you need to know about that you don't do. And so I think it was very informative for our new teachers to hear, hear from Deputy Superintendent John Adams. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Well, I just got one thing to talk about. July the 4th, Declaration of Independence. Thomas Jefferson and John Adams both died on July the 4th. And on this July the 4th, we lost Coach Jim Frazier. He's the coach that coached at Sprayberry High School from 1959 until he retired in 1986. Our stadium at the field is Frazier, it's Frazier Stadium, Frazier Stadium, right? Yeah. And when I got on the board five years ago, I started getting mail from Coach Frazier for different things and started getting mail addressed to someone else, one of his former football players. And I finally went over to the house and met him and Ms. Wilma, his wife of 61 years who passed away a year ago this next August, and became friends. And he started inviting me to the pizza parties. In fact, he even invited me to his family reunions. He loved to send out mail. And so I'd go to the pizza parties he would have with the football team before spring practices started. And sometimes he would send me personal notes. And then over the last year and a half, he would send mail to the office here at Glover Street and to my home. He was cleaning out his files. And he sent me letters and pictures of things from his past that just, you know, I just felt like I was getting to know the man. Anyway, so it was no surprise, we heard of his death and was sad that we lost him on July the 4th. But last Saturday, all fitting, the Marietta Funeral Home on Canton Road hosted a pizza party, visitation, and then the memorial service where many of his former colleagues, let's see, I think it was Coach Jack Wade originally hired Jim Frazier back in 59. He was there. I went to school with a couple of his daughters, well, three of his daughters. And former football players, former Cobb administrators and other people that I didn't recognize. But here's a man who, my phrase, he kept the buzz in Jacket Athletics over at Sprayberry, and he will be long missed. And sometime in the football season, I'm going to guess around homecoming, they'll have a special memorial for him at Sprayberry. So we're going to miss Coach Frazier, miss Ms. Wilma. But there, there's a whole legacy out there of leaders, politicians, and nationally-renowned athletes who at one time were coached by Jim Frazier.
I don't know. Were you coached by Coach Frazier? I didn't, I didn't get into the weeds there, but all right. So if no one has anything else to say, without objection, we are adjourned.